So let's let me know when you're good. Okay. Welcome. It's Wednesday, December eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. This is the regular meeting of the class at school committee. We do have a forum, so I'm going to go ahead and call to order, and I will do a quick poll call. Ms. Hannah is not yet here. Ms. Leskey?
Present.
Mr. Carr?
Present.
Mr. McClellan is absent, so you're stuck with me. Mr. Dial, here. We have three of the five elected members of the school committee, so we do have a forum. Business can't proceed. And with that, I will do a pledge of allegiance with everyone. So pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Excellent. So Stu, viewers have noticed, Ms. Hannah has joined us on time. That still counts as on time, too. Stu, viewers have noticed that I'm now sitting as the chair, vice chair, assuming the chair position for this this meeting because Ms. McClellan had a conflict and can't make it. We'll muddle through together. I do want to, however, take a moment to acknowledge terrible sad news in Madison, Wisconsin. We yet again have to acknowledge another school shooting situation that's taken the lives of students in the in the academic sphere. There aren't words to describe this. I will just note that I'm sure I speak on behalf of the committee and our community that our hearts go out to the families in Madison, Wisconsin who were impacted in the community at large, and we hope for a recovery and that they are able to, you know, heal. So. But I wouldn't, I wanted to acknowledge that as it is in the news and something that does impact the the school communities. So. But with that, I have no opening remarks. This meeting does have some happiness. We have a whole bunch of attendees that were, I guess, invited slash told to come, and so we're going to keep you guys to the whole end. No, we're not. But we are going to start with, as we traditionally do with any public comment. This is a time for any members of the public to make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you do want to make a comment on an item that's on the agenda, you can let us know now, but reserve your comment for that time. And so with that, I just will see if there's any public comments online. We do have a packed house. Any public comments from the attendees? You are members of the public? Nope, hearing none. We'll close off Agenda Item B and move on to our invited guests. Our first invited guest, we have our regular update from our superintendent student advisory council liaison, Nathan Aschar. Nathan, I'll turn it over to you. Welcome. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me again. So I'll just give a few updates. I don't think we've had an update since the fall sports have concluded. Obviously, we have a soccer team behind us, but a lot of the teams went really far. Girl soccer made it to the semifinals. We obviously made it to the finals. Boy soccer won the state championship, first ever in program history. Willis' first state championship. The field hockey team also made a really good run, and sort of the football team. I think overall, something that I saw this year that was really special was a lot of the seniors and captains were doing a really good job being inclusive to the younger kids. So overall, I think the fall sports went super smoothly from an academic side. A lot of the seniors, kids in my grade, my friends are getting into their colleges now. Some kids are hearing back from their early decisions. And speaking for myself, it's really cool to see a lot of kids are getting into their first choice schools, which I think is credited to everything they've done in the four years, but also the school system and how it's run and structured. Guidance has helped a lot as well for a lot of these kids. So just seeing them hear back early, knowing where they're going for the next four years and having their first choice is pretty special. So far, I know you guys always ask me what could be better, but there's, I think it's running pretty smoothly. I know everyone's looking forward to the holiday break. We're working on some efficiency stuff in the cafeteria just because the food's been so good with the new chef that there's been like a little bit of problems with the lines and everything. But like I said in our meeting earlier with Mrs. Shannon, I think it's a good problem to have because we were all here when we hired the new chef, and I've never seen kids more excited about cafeteria food before. So I think it's unintended consequences of a really good solution to a problem. So I think we've done a good job with that. And I'll take any questions, but that's all I have to say.
That's great. Thank you very much. See any questions?
That's awesome. Yeah, it's the old chef thing. I heard there was a repulsive pizza. I got halted serving at the middle school for a day or two, maybe.
High school as well.
Okay.
We're working on how to stand politely.
We're now experiencing.
Oh, wait, our turn.
Thank you, Ms. Hannah. Ms. Leslie?
Comments, but I'm just happy to hear that you used the word smoothly a couple of times to indicate how things are going, both from the college perspective, athletic teams clearly going well, and and students being happy. Yes, I think happy kids learn and relaxed kids learn. So hearing that you're in general reporting that that students are feeling happy and relaxed here at school is really important.
Yeah.
About that's why.
We talked about it in our committee meeting today earlier after school, just because we're coming off of that previous five-year strategic plan and looking forward to creating a new one. And we're trying to come up with new problems, new really big future projects to work on, and there there weren't too many big ideas. So it's a good thing. It should be a good plan coming forward.
They call it polishing jam.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Mr. Carr?
Thanks for a great report. I'm excited to hear about the stories of the guys sitting behind you and especially when we get your haircut.
Yeah, a lot of good stuff. A lot of good stuff there.
Yeah, congratulations.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Asher, thank you very much for the presentation. I have no comments or questions or succinct as always, and it's good to hear things are going positive. So. With that, we'll move on to our our next agenda item. Special recognition, you gave the prelude, first ever state championship for Cohasset in in soccer. So I guess, Mr. Willis, do you want to lead the discussion or? How do you want to, how do you want to proceed? We're happy to recognize the incredible work you guys have done.
Maybe the three captains should leave. Well, I'll I'll throw a few things out there. I'm going to ask questions. I'll let them in. But yeah, they had a fantastic season. It was the first time Cohasset made the state finals three times in the nineteen eighties and lost twice in overtime. We've beaten three times in the last fifteen years in my time here and lost once in overtime. We've had a, it's been an absolute just blast of a season. I've had a great time watching these guys grow. We've had a fantastic, ever since we come out of COVID, we've had an excellent program. It's been very competitive, but we've gotten just so far each time. It was a fantastic banquet. It was amazing to go to a banquet and not have to spend the first half of it. Convincing everyone that they did a great job, make everybody feel better. You know, when you have a very good team, your season ends in heartbreak. It just happens. We've made the tournament every year, except one in my time here, and every year has ended in heartbreaking fashion after a fantastic season. So it was pretty amazing to. You only can end your season with a win if you don't make the tournament or you win the whole thing, which is pretty rare. So it was a fantastic season, and I think the captains, Ty, Keenan, Nathan, would probably be the best equipped to answer any question you have or talk about.
Welcome. Come on up. Happy to have you. The floor is yours. What can you tell us about the the incredible season?
I mean, it was a truly special experience. I mean, there's no better group of guys that I want to deal with. The team bonding, I mean, on and off the field is great. We did a couple of things. I'll share a couple of stories. We do a team deep it up for every game, which is where we all gather on the circle, typically around the Cohasset basketball courts right in town, and we all have to touch the ball while the ball's in the air. And then the last person catches the ball. So come tournament, when we had thirty-two kids, it was pretty hard, but just a great tradition. It's always a lot of fun. It's a great team bonding experience. And then the team dinners every, before every playoff game, we gather each night, share some laughs, good food. It was just a great experience. And then our run was just truly special after starting in a different formation, not really knowing where it's going to go. A lot of guys, we lost a lot of guys last year, a lot of good seniors. So it was really cool to see a lot of guys step up and really fill those roles. And obviously, we got the result we always wanted. We've dreamt of this since the preseason trip, since eighth grade, when we were just starting to join high school. It was, it was really a dream come true.
I mean, for this group, the seniors, it started off a little rough. Last two years, we've lost in the same round of eight. So getting over the hump and making it into the final four was truly special in its own. And then we would go on to win the state championship. It was just an amazing experience. It's, it's, we've all been playing with each other since middle school. We lost in the M-Talk final, and I believe sixth grade to Pembroke. So we've had a lot of losses, but we finally overcame it, which is just a truly amazing feeling. All the guys in the room worked equally hard. We all wanted it, and we all enjoyed spending time together. So I mean, it just kind of summarizes what our season was. We didn't really have any beef on the team. Everyone got along. We're just a good group of guys, and I think we kind of proved it to everyone that we deserved to win this year.
Yeah, and I think a reason why, I mean, like you guys, we had said, the program's never won a state championship before, and I think something we really dug into was that to get something you've never had, you have to do things you've never done. So we kind of dug into those team traditions with the hair. It's, I think Willis has seen it all the time, getting more extreme every single year. Last year, three years ago was mullets. Last year's frosted tips, this year full bleach, several kids of like three, two rounds of bleach. So the hair wasn't a great help at first, but just as captains do, we feel really fortunate to have picked up and stepped into a really good team culture. I think that's something that that you can attribute to the coaching staff and captains before. Cohasset Soccer specifically has been a really strong program just in the fact that the youth programs are great, supporting when the kids get into high school, the teams are always really strong, but a lot of the traditions we have are things that we just were able to adopt, carry on, and kind of add on to just to get that extra element of it, and having our season ended heartbreak three years in a row in the same tournament game, and kind of kids called it the curse. We felt like it was a really tough landmark to overcome. So getting past that game and then in the semifinals trailing one nothing, we're losing one nothing against a really gritty East Boston team, and then scoring in the last minute and then ending up winning it overtime was something that I think really spoke to the composure we had, where all these guys were good for a good time and some laughs and some goofiness, but it was a really mature group on the field. And just in the face of adversity, we had in the state finals, too, we were trailing for most of the time, and we kept being relentless, not really panicking or changing the way we played, and that that takes maturity, especially as kids, professional teams can't even really find that consistently. And we were able to tap into that. And Willis coached us something really that I think helped us a lot. We, from the beginning of the season, we had partners, we paired up in groups. We call it buddy check. So whenever we get into vans or buses or to the field, we'll sort of be like buddy check, and we'd look to see our buddies, and it'd be a random group, someone you haven't really hung out with, maybe they're not in your friend group directly, not even in your grade. And then come tournament time, like I said, we need, we needed to do something different. So we have what was called a brother's keeper, and this was someone that Willis had put thought into pairing us with one other person, and you're supposed to be responsible for that kid, that kid's mentality in school, outside of school, so like socially, on the weekends, and then even in the field, so on the, in the game. So like if someone's head goes down after making a mistake, your brother's keeper is supposed to talk to you, make sure your head stays up. And I think that when we were trailing in this time, and one of us coming down to the wire, I think that's something that really helped us.
Well, we are incredibly proud of you. I'll open up the committee for any questions, comments. We can just go over the forum here. Or we can go in order. Hannah, do you want to start?
Sure. First of all, congratulations. And I think like everything you guys are talking about, like those little differences, like that's what it is. That's what takes it. So congrats to all of you guys for executing on it and, you know, for Coach for changing some things up and realizing that you got to do things differently in order to get over that hump. It takes that. And so this is something no one can ever take from you guys. Something that you guys all can share for a long time to come. So congratulations.
I'll add my congratulations. And one of the things that I noticed when you all filed in, because students come in here all the time, and they're mostly silent. And I could just hear this sort of just like banter between both sides of the room. It wasn't just one small group of people, and I think that really spoke to your chemistry as a team beyond the season, which indicates that, wow, you guys actually really truly got to know each other and enjoy each other and became a team working together. And in addition to being state champions, which is like a life memory, you also learned what it means to be on a team, to prepare for people on your team, and that's going to carry you on in life. So that's a sort of off-the-field skill as well, and those of you as captains who are able to lead the team, that leading a team is a skill that you will take forward, and you will find yourselves using it over and over again. So congratulations, and thank you, Coach. That's an accomplishment.
Sure. Congratulations. I'll I'll share a fun moment. I I lived in the village, the first house on South Main Street, and I'm pretty close to the police and fire station. We're sitting around one day, and so we hear when the police and fire department are going out, hell's breaking loose, and everybody's like, Jesus, an emergency? And I said, no, no, soccer guys are back. And there were a fire truck, two police cars, all the sirens going, and we all piled out on the front yard, and these guys are all hanging out the window, looking as happy as can be. So congratulations. Usually the cops are coming if my kids did something.
Sharon, you want to say something?
Um, I just want to say congratulations. I have had the fortune of watching many of you play soccer since you were little. Many of you have been on teams with your boys, and to see you be able to accomplish this goal in your senior year was really fun. I was able to be there, and I just feel like if anyone was going to do it, it was your group of soccer players who were going to do this. You've been so committed to this sport since you were little. And so just a huge congratulations. Everybody is right. It is something that nobody can ever take away from you. It is a memory you will hold on to forever. And it's just a really special feeling. So I'm glad you were willing to do it and to do it together.
And I have nothing to say that hasn't already been said. So once again, congratulations.
Now the pressure's on for repeat.
The two feet. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for having me.
That's fantastic. Just let's see people doing well.
Cheerio over there. No, I love the hair.
The budget discussion's coming up. So that's, that's, that's what's working here. So with our invited guests, having you have you presented, we'll turn it over to our superintendent schools, Ms. Sarah Shannon, for the superintendent update.
I do have a little PowerPoint this week.
Wonderful. Look at our great use of technology. This is awesome.
So in the last couple of weeks, we've had a lot going on in the district, and there's a lot to celebrate. So first, I want to just thank the town. At the special town meeting last Monday night, we were able to have, out of our school stabilization fund, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars appropriated for MSBA accelerated repair program for the roof at Osgood. We were able to approve one point four three million dollars for a fire alarm system here at middle school and high schools. And I think one of the things when we were at the town meeting, somebody in the community asked about why we're appropriating that kind of money for something at the middle school and high school when we're also trying to do a building. And it was a really good question, and I just want to reiterate that the reason we're doing this is because we're probably a good seven-plus years out from a new building, and our fire alarm system is not going to last that long. And without a fire alarm system that is working, we can't actually occupy this school facility. And so it really was an essential need that we repair the fire alarm system this summer so that we can continue to occupy this building until we do potentially get a new facility. And then not technically our vote or our ask, but the CPC was requesting fifty thousand dollars to operate the baseball fields at Milliken. That is a town request, but it is definitely something that benefits our high school baseball team, and so we just are adding that into our thinking because it does have a really good impact on us as well. So that was a great night for the schools and for the town. And I also want to share that we've had some really great MEKO events recently. The MEKO Directors Association puts on a workshop every year, and this was their fortieth year of holding this conference. And this year, our own Elise Kins Carl was the lead coordinator and master mistress of ceremonies for the event. And we had people, they ran the same event actually two days in a row, so they could accommodate more people at the location. And so we had staff attending on both days, and so it was a really well-attended, well-run, and really informative informative day for all of us. And then I don't have any pictures, but I actually also last week went into Boston and had dinner with many of our MEKO families. And it was a very casual opportunity to sit down, get to know some of the families who were part of the MEKO program. And we just had a nice time talking, talking about our own families, having dinner together, and then talking about what from their perspective is working and what needs to be addressed or have attention paid to it as we move forward into the future. So that was a great event as well. And, you know, December is always a really busy time and time to celebrate our students. So in the last two weeks, there have been lots of concerts at almost all levels. The Osgood concert is being held in January. So never fear, there's still a concert. Everybody can attend in January. And our high school and middle school students have performed at other places in town, at Woke Commons, at the, is it Sunrise? Why am I blinking? Over on three A, the senior center, the senior housing, and to the elementary schools. I also was able to attend the fifth grade Deer Hill Circus last week, which, as people read my newsletter, this coming out tomorrow was such a great event. It had been a long time since I've been to a Deer Hill Circus, brought back a lot of great memories, but more importantly, it really showcased all that we're trying to do as a district. It really connects nicely with everything that we're doing with regard to the anxious generation and incorporating play and responsible and reasonable risk-taking. Our kids learned so many great skills through the circus, and they had a great time doing it. There were lots of smiles, lots of laughter. And what I really love to see is all of the students encouraging each other. It was a really supportive community-building event. And then tomorrow night, I don't have a picture because it hasn't happened yet, but tomorrow night we'll be inducting a whole group of new National Honor Society members into the Cohasset High School National Honor Society chapter. So stay tuned for a picture, but we're excited to to be able to celebrate them tomorrow night. And then the other thing, and I don't have a picture for it, is a couple of weeks ago, Michael Stapleton had sent out a request to have folks join his task force. He spoke about it at the last meeting. The meeting, the first forum was held, and there was great participation, great attendance. And I believe it actually went beyond the time limit because people were so engaged in that process. And so I'm sure at the next meeting that he attends, he will share more out, but we are just grateful for that level of participation from our staff and from our families. It's, it's great to have as many stakeholders involved in really important work that we're doing. So we're grateful for everybody who was there. Other than that, I would say just a reminder that this Friday starts our winter recess, and that we will be looking forward to having all of our students and staff back on Thursday, January second. We do have two days of school that week, and that we're wishing everybody who celebrates happy holidays and everybody a happy New Year and safe and relaxing vacation.
Thank you, Ms. Shannon. And your admonition to the community on the third and the fourth is not lost. So come to school. We have, we have an attendance issue, so let's, let's make sure we're here.
I'm going to, I have to pull up the planned trips.
The next genomics, yes, that will, that's the conclusion of the superintendent update. That moves us on to an overview of our planned school trips. I think this is something that I've been asked for, I asked for in prior meetings, and this is, I'm super excited. Not as excited as if we're going on the school trips, but.
Sorry, I didn't have this one ready. So this is high school first, middle school second. So proposed trips for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, so next school year. Model Congress, Boston, which is not out of state this year, it has been out of state before, will be in February. That is different from Model UN. They are two different but similar experiences. So the one in Boston will be February twenty, twenty to the twenty-third. Model UN, which happens in New York, is March twelfth to the sixteenth. You can see the cost there. The one that is in-state is seven hundred, the one that is out-of-state is eighty forty. April vacation of two thousand and twenty-five, there is going to be a Costa Rica trip. April vacation of two thousand and twenty-six will be a Guadalupe trip. Same vacation, two thousand and twenty-six is a Europe trip. Both Mr. Grassman and Mr. Willis have been here recently talking about both of those trips. And then there's a French exchange trip that Mr. Grassman has also been here talking about. So we'll actually be receiving students in December of two thousand and twenty-five, so a year from now. And then we will send our students to France, February two thousand and twenty-six. And then there'll be a Guatemala trip in April of two thousand and twenty-six. So what you're seeing is that typically there's two out-of-country experiences for students to choose from during the spring vacations, those April vacations. And then there's the UN, Model UN and Model Congress trips that typically happen each year. Those are not alternating years. And then for the middle school, it's really right now the Quebec trip that happens yearly. That's the trip for our students who are taking French. Happens in the spring, and the cost is seven hundred and fifty dollars for this coming spring. So those are all of our planned trips, really for the next this year and next year.
Great. Any questions, comments from the committee?
Did there, was there a, sorry. Was it, wasn't there a eighth grade Grand Canyon trip that was a regular mainstay that has been dropped?
There was. I think post-COVID, it started to die out, and then I, I, I don't know exactly what the reason is. It finally stopped happening. But there had been, I don't know if it was teachers who didn't want to, I think actually one year they ended up having to do it after the school year for a variety of reasons. So I can get more information on that, but I do know that it's been longer.
And then are we, is there a thought to get like a reciprocal Spanish trip for the French trip or anything, or is that? No. For Quebec, sorry. I guess this is for CMS for.
For CMS?
Yeah.
So I, I don't know that there's quite the, I don't know that there's quite an equivalent trip for Spanish at the middle school level without going to Spain or Mexico. And that's a much bigger trip for you or for seven to eight years, which I'm not quite sure I would be in support of. I think they're a little young for that kind of a trip. And I do think that the Spanish ends up being the, a lot of service trips. So like Costa Rica is a Spanish-speaking trip. I believe. I might be wrong in that, but I do know that some of the service trips in the spring for high school end up being Spanish-speaking. Because I know that one of the Spanish teachers is working with Miss Cremens on the Guatemala trip.
Europe is not Spanish. That's.
Europe is, Europe is just a. Europe is, Europe is just a European adventure.
Okay. Last question, and you and I've had some light conversation about it for the, uh, for the group. So as we have state champs come in and everything, oftentimes those teams get asked to participate in a tournament for a high, like a high school tournament. So it's not a club tournament, but you have to win your state in order to be invited into it. So how do we, like, are we gonna start considering those or how do we, because they aren't like planned out and it's like you have to kind of earn your way into it.
So I don't know. I think we'd have to talk about that. I, I don't know that I've heard of our teams being invited to those. I think our students. I think that would be interesting because many of our kids, like a lot of our soccer kids have already transitioned into their winter sport.
Yeah.
And winter sports quickly transition into spring sports. So I think there would be a lot for us to figure out.
Okay.
If we were to, to do that and we would have to see about interest and things. I think it's hard because we do do try and like the high school's process for trips is a two-year in advance trip.
Yeah.
Process. Um, so I think that's just something we would have to look at and really talk about.
And I think it happens over the summer. So I wasn't sure if it's like a school sponsored thing or if it's just like.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I have not heard of any of our teams having been invited to that.
Okay.
And I've had one child who's been a part of two championship teams. I have not heard of that.
Okay.
So.
Um, Ms. Scott, Ms. Scott.
Oh, I have, I do, sorry. Um, okay, um. I guess I'll start with a question. So trips at the middle and the high school are faculty dependent versus uh dependent upon sort of curricular or traditional traditions of the school or benchmarks of like an age group. Um, cause I feel like I had also heard of the Grand Canyon trip and I think there were mumblings either last year or the year before, uh, at least at the school committee level around a sixth grade trip to connect to civics and going to Washington DC for a couple of days as a whole eighth grade class in the springtime to sort of culminate their year together. I know they used to go to Camp Wing in Duxbury um as middle schoolers and whether or not I, and I totally understand the complexities of student travel. I've led student trips and it's a lot. Um. But I'm just wondering if there's any sort of interest in shifting or at least discussing shifting the trips from being faculty driven to being sort of school driven, school driven, and that these are the trips that we offer as a district. Um, and as a school, so the kids can look forward to them. I think that both Ms. Hannah and I have eighth graders who have heard about trips and then are seeing.
They don't have.
Oh, there is one trip happening. Um, and that there's, you know, my child keeps asking, well, when am I going to get to go to DC or the um on the Grand Canyon trip? I said, well, I haven't really think about it. I said, I wouldn't hold my breath because at this point it's, we're getting really sort of tight on that. But I think just being clear or even just some clarity for the kids around what they can ex, and parents, what they can expect. Is there any eighth grade trip or isn't, isn't there? And if there isn't, let's just be clear about that, I think, maybe.
Yep.
So I don't know that that was a question.
No, but I did, so I think, so like the Grand Canyon trip was not was not any, I would never have considered that an eighth grade trip. It was not school connected. It was run by the teachers, but it was not curricular driven. It was an interest of those staff members to create that trip to bring them. And it was usually around twenty to twenty-five students who attended. Um, a true grade level trip would be for all students.
Right.
Um, so as far as I am aware, there has been no true eighth grade trip at the middle school level for many, many years. Um, there was a sixth grade trip. They did do Camp Wing. Camp Wing does not do school year experiences, I don't think anymore. I think that's why it stopped. And there was a year where it was a bad experience at Camp Wing. Not because of our kids, but because of the kids. Um, and so that is something that I think when that happened and then COVID, it didn't come back. So we could look at curricular driven trips. I think even if they're curricular driven, they're an enrichment to the curriculum rather than part of the actual curriculum. And even if they are curricular driven, they are still staff dependent. At, because you need the staff to be willing to go and spend overnights and travel and be away from family and things like that. Now, all doable. Um, I think it's just something that would have to really be looked at. I also think we need to look at interest in how much that would cost and what we would do to support students who can't cover those costs. Because if it's a full grade level trip that is part of the curriculum, then it does become incumbent upon us to ensure that everyone can attend. Um, I will also say as somebody who has done these trips lots of times in other districts, um. As the years progress, it becomes a little bit more difficult in terms of covering medical needs. Um, and there's some other complex issues that need to be considered. Again, not reasons to not do it, but just adds to the, the planning process. Um, so I think if we were going to look at like a true, true eighth grade trip, it would need to be something that a committee would be formed and really look at um how that would work, where they would go, how it connects, costs. How we support students who need assistance with costs, things like that.
Yeah, no, absolutely. It's, I, I do think it's very, it, it's a very nuanced
Yeah.
kind of thing. I don't know that I'm necessarily in sport, in support of an entire eighth grade trip. But I think that from, as a parent, what I hear from kids is that their understanding
is.
It is that what is, it was, it was a school trip and that they have the expectation of it. So I think it's also about how do we communicate to parents and, and how faculty can communicate with the students to sort of manage those expectations. Um, for students and, and eventually that, you know, there will not be kids that remember or have older siblings that did something along those lines.
I think too, to add on to that, it would be interesting to take it class by class and see what field trips they've done over the years. So the eighth graders, they were COVID in the fourth grade. Fifth grade, all field trips were off. Sixth grade, I don't think they got a field trip. So like they keep, they feel like they've been jipped out of it. And as the younger kids come in, field trips have gotten reinstated.
Yes.
And they're seeing their siblings all go and they're like, okay, well, we got Grand Canyon. Oh, no, we don't.
Yeah.
So I think maybe if we like could actually do like an analysis of like, what has each grade at this point been able to go on and experience and whatever, it might even just help i- identify like, okay, maybe we do need to kind of make a little bit of an effort with this class or that class or whatever.
Yeah.
Potentially.
Yeah, we could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anything else with Leslie? Um, so from my end, thank you for putting this together. I, I would like to see the estimated costs filled out. I do just want to check that the, if there's three options for April vacation and one for uh in twenty twenty-six and one for twenty twenty-five, I just want to make sure that, because you said there's two in each one. I just want to make sure that's.
This, this coming April vacation, there's only one.
There's only, and that's fine. And actually, one of the things I was most concerned about is, you know, we approve these trips. I think they're incredible opportunities. Um, but you know, I kept thinking, oh, Costa Rica, Guadalupe, Guatemala. How's anyone gonna afford all this? But now I see, because it's laid out here, that these are, you know, you can't, you can't, you can't do them all. You can't do them all. So that, that's very helpful. I do want to add on to Ms. Hannah's comment. As a parent of a seventh grader, our seventh grade class has had the same experience. I don't think my son has been on a field trip since, actually, maybe. Maybe ever, but certainly not since like first or second grade. So there's, there does seem to be some, some maybe worthwhile just to check to see, make sure people are getting the, the experience, because those are valuable educational experiences. Um, but if we could keep this up to date as we move forward and maybe keep it as part of our regular package when we approve trips so that we can see how it fits into the full spectrum, I think that'd be really helpful. But thank you for, for doing this. This, this gives me a lot of context and it also reminds people all the opportunities that we offer our students as a district. So.
Yeah.
Uh, I think it's, I think it's great. So appreciate the work. Um, so that's, that's planned school trips. So that ends the high notes of the school committee meeting. We're gonna now move into our now favorite uh agenda block, agenda block eight budget resources and governance. Uh, I'll turn it over to our director of finance and operations, Ms. Susan Owen, for our monthly update. And then there's a couple of other urgent items underneath that as well.
There are. Um, thank you. So this is just a summary of the FY twenty-five November financial report. Um, trying to keep a close eye on what's happening with the budget. You can see we're currently at a seven hundred and eighty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty-three dollar shortfall. Um, again, we're, we're, you know, holding strong along with things that we can hold, that there's some things that we still have to, you know, supply um for our staff and our students. So that number will, that will grow. Um, including, you know, substitute teachers. We can't estimate or project what, what that, that's gonna be. So that number's gonna fluctuate. What we have was in monitoring, we have frozen. Um, we are not holding paper or tissues. We, you know, the basics are, are still coming through. We're just trying to be very conscious of what we are spending. Spent tuition's um are deficit by two hundred and sixty-three thousand one hundred and forty. That has not changed since the last um report and, and budget line items that are showing the short files are the same. Oh, that I reported last month, so spent tuition, its utilities, specialized transportation, custodial supplies, materials, and then some salaries.
So, um, Ms. Owen.
Yes.
So the sped tuition's, I think we understand, it's been explained several times that, that these things aren't disparate as things change. Utilities, I think we get because price spikes uh exceeded our budget expectations. Transportation leads back to sped. Custodial supplies, materials. I mean, in the grand scheme of things, I'm like, I don't want to, you know, say that's not important, but it's kind of a rounding error. But can you talk just a little bit how we underestimated salaries by a quarter million dollars? That one seems like one we should have a handle on. We have talked about this offline, but just.
No, I can explain that. Um, so some of those are just unanticipated um changes in staffing. So people, people leave, people come, you know, staff leave. We, we hire. Um, we always attempt, you know, to, to hire um smart. Um, we can always hire cheaper. Um, and that happens. And if you recall, you know, budget season, we're usually finalizing this budget in February, March and presenting to the public. Um, a lot changes from that time until where we sit right now. Um, people have column changes, degree changes. Um, there's lots of things that go into that. Um, I think we added um a part-time ESP because it was needed at Deer Hill Elementary School, I believe. Or it wasn't filled.
It wasn't filled and it ended up having to be filled.
Yes. Um, so there, things like that that come into play.
That would have been a budget. It was, it was.
I believe that one was budgeted for, but I think it's, it's really our unanticipated column changes.
Okay.
Um, is something, and then like, you know, Ms. Owen said, it's when a, a teacher has left and they, we have to rehire. While we make all attempts, sometimes especially a, a specialty position ends up costing us more than what the teacher who left was paid for for salary.
And those are the types of things that can't, can't really be projected. Um, it's February, last February and March. On top of, you know, if we have um staff that want to leave.
Right.
Um, we have to replace some ways with, with a long-term suspension, which then becomes, you know, two people being paid for the same position ultimately.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I, I guess I can't say I didn't mean the drop because I absolutely did, but I, I apologize for interrupting. Thank you for indulging.
Um, the rest of the report is pretty standard. Um, this, this graph just shows you um the different schools and their budgets and where they, where they are with their spending. Um, circuit breaker, there's been no change to circuit breaker. We received, we received our first payment. Now we get into capital, um, capital outlay. Um, almost all of these have been completed, I believe. The only thing we're waiting on right now is the furniture replacement. Deer Hill is still um waiting on that order. But everything else on a capitalist has been completed. And then you can see the stabilization. Um, there was one hundred and fifty for the middle high school fire alarm study and the deer hill completion of retiring, which has been um done except for a couple fixes, but some, some of those. Um, our draft capital list, I'm not gonna go over here, I'm gonna go over it in more depth later, but this is the draft capital list. And then we have our grants. Um, as you can see, I mean, our grant funding, our contributions that we're receiving are slowly diminishing. Um, we used to have a lot more grants than what we have now, a lot more funding. Um, just from not receiving as many, as many grants from state and federal government as we used to. Our revolving account, you'll also see same thing, you know, three years back, we had some very high fund balances. Um, because of uh constraints on our budget, we've definitely been relying um more on our revolving accounts. And we've, you know, been conscious of spending down those balances that were um quite high for a long time or for several years. So you can see what the balances are on our revolving. And, you know, they also cover some of our salaries. They, they cover about twenty-two FTEs. And this is just a breakdown by, by grouping. Um, hasn't changed any from the year to year, I mean, from month to month, headcount FTE. A summary here, um, sixty-eight percent of our, our budget is regular education salaries. Um, eighteen percent is mandated professional education salaries and then fourteen percent is distributed, which are, you know, custodians, someone, someone's not designated to be the war. And if you want to know how many positions we have in each school, we have the FTEs here and how they're funded. So column on the right shows you how many are funded by grants revolving and how, how many are funded by the school operating budget. For the Oscar, the Deer Hill, and the middle and the high school. And again, this is just a summary of these are our grants. Um, these are the funding. Title one, um, we lost that grant, so you'll see there. And revolving accounts, again, the FTEs and the headcount. And enrollment as of September first, um, each month we, we show you the month as of September first and then we show you the rolling. Um. Month and then it, which, I mean, changes sometimes just tiny bit. And our electric and gas summary, so utilities. Um, you can see our, our usage is just about the same as it was last year in my career, but the cost is a little bit higher, which obviously the contract is higher or um peak hours, we utilize more. Same thing with the gas. Um, the gas, you will see we're again down on our usage. And we are slightly down on our cost only because it was a credit um towards the All's Good School. Um, it came through as a credit from last year and they, so they did it in September and October of this year. And then again, our food service department is, as they said, um, thriving, very successful, many upgrades. I'm still looking for help. Anyone, you know, interested in, in some others hours or hot time hours. Um, please apply to the email here, vinicodone@cohasaketwelve.org. Um, certainly if you can go on school spring, there, there jobs there as well. Um, and again, the Co-Hasa Middle School and Friends of Holly Hill, their God Education Program is feeding students bodies now. Um, and we've given you kind of an update on what our food service meal counts are. So if you um look at this September, October, um, there is, you know, we've served um quite a few. If you look at opposed to last year, you'll see how we are up. And then the year before. I'm sorry, yeah, for two years. Um, and I know there was a question on the participation rate, which I thought was here.
It's in the printed materials.
Is it in there?
So I do see it.
I thought it, oh, it's right in the base, I'm sorry. So as you can see, well, you can't see, it's in the printed materials. Um, for the current year, our petition, uh, participation rate, we have thirteen hundred and ninety-nine enrollment out of a twenty, twenty-one day month of petition. Participation rate is at sixty-four percent for this year. Last year it was at forty-eight percent. And the year before it was at fifty percent. So the percent is definitely up from past years and growing if we can continue. So the percentage is definitely up from past years and growing if we can continue with our pizza coin. Which we won't move up. Transportation, you know, ridership is still tight. Our old Uber bus has been permanently tied because it's no longer repairable. We also have a minibus that you'll see probably at the next school meeting where we're working with the town that we're going to, we're going to surplus those two vehicles and get them off our insurance administration and out of our lots and dispose of them. Which means we are definitely going to look for a new bus through capital. At this point, obviously this concerns regarding the utilities, the tuition's, transportation and salaries. But we have closely monitored it. We're, we're, we're working through it. We're, we're meeting with leadership, we're meeting with open architect, reading to figure their fiscal analysis. Looks like we have a tentative conversation tomorrow. Report's not, not complete yet, it won't be complete till after the holidays. They still have a few more people to talk to at the same time. So we're, Sarah and I have definitely waved to see what, what they come forward with to see where, where the areas are, if any, that we can make adjustments. Any savings? If, if any questions, I will answer them for you. It's pretty standard, it's nothing.
Okay, I love that. The, uh, any questions, Ms. Hannah?
Um, I think my other question is on the grant side. So if we're going backwards in the grants, like what is that process of trying? Like, or is there like an audit of all the grants we could even possibly apply for? And we've been rejected from.
So those grants are not grants. I mean, yes, we apply for them, but they're not really application grants. So for instance, title one is based on our social, our students who are applying for free reduced lunch. And we do not meet the threshold to receive funding for the number of students who receive free reduced lunch. Now, we are continuously trying to encourage families to fill out the, those forms if they would qualify. We, as a state, provide free lunch. And so while we may have students who could qualify for free and reduced lunch because they don't need to fill out those forms in order to get the free lunch, sometimes they just don't fill them out. We tried at the start of the school year to explain why it's so important to still fill out the forms, but we can't force people to fill out those forms. And so that's really the, what qualifies us for title one. And so unfortunately, that's, that's that.
And it's not a year to year thing?
It is year to year. Yeah. And then other funding sources like circuit breaker, like our two fifty-two grants, our specialty grants. Some of that is going down because they are actually reducing the amount of money available at the federal level. Again, something that is outside of our control, unfortunately. So that's, that, that's when a lot of that grant funding that you see having gone down or no longer available, that's why. We continue to apply for grants. We are also a district, and this is something that I know prior to my arrival, both Superintendent Sullivan and Dr. Scollins talked with our reps and senators because we are a district that doesn't always qualify for the grants that the Department of Ed puts out. And that makes it hard.
Yeah.
Because while we may be a wealthy district in lots of ways, it does not mean we have available funding all the time. And so we do need grant funding to supplement and support us. But because we aren't recognized as needing certain thresholds by the state, we don't qualify for those. So we apply for everything we can. And sometimes we get things and sometimes we don't.
Hey, Ms. Hannah, Lesky? Mr. Carr?
No questions. I just might add, we did, Tori and I and the subcommittee did meet recently, discussed all these things that we we're working through some potential suggestions for how to handle it. Stay tuned.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Owen, you know, it's coming. So I do have a few questions. One is a mechanical question.
Yes.
So how, how does, I mean, we, we've got this picture of the schools with a bucket of money and then expenses chipping away at that bucket of money as time goes on. From a mechanical perspective, how does it actually work? Do we have, just like at the beginning of the year, twenty-three million dollars seen in account? Or does the town give us a monthly payment? I guess, how does that, how does the cash flow actually work for the schools?
So we have devoted budget about at the beginning of the year designated to the individual accounts. But we have it all upfront.
So we, so we get at the beginning, beginning of the year, if we get a lump sum payment, that goes into the bank. So we have the money in the bank.
It's on paper.
Yeah, yeah. But it's, I mean, it's there.
It's allotted and set aside for the schools.
Okay, so there's, but there's money in a banking account somewhere that.
Yes.
Okay. That's, so we, we do just live off, we have a lot of money and we spend it down. We have a shortfall of seven hundred and eighty-five thousand right now. Do we know the point at which we run out of money?
We have run out of money.
Well, we're, we're.
The timing.
Yeah, I mean, we're still, we still have money in the bank and we still can write checks and we can still pay our teachers. But at a certain point, we'll have zero dollars in those bank accounts and we will not be able to pay our teachers.
I understand what you're saying. So what, what, what I did this year to try to be, to project a little bit better was we calculated what our salaries are, our automated salaries that we know are from the beginning of the year to the end of the year. And this year we put them on a purchase order, so that bucket of money is held. And it's encumbered, so to speak. And with that encumbered, like if I unencumbered that, we would have quite a few million dollars sitting here, we wouldn't be in a negative, but then we wouldn't have enough to cover payroll till the end of June, so.
Right.
So the, the payroll is allotted for, but this number is going to, is going to grow. And that payroll number can change. I mean, from now till, till June, if, again, if people leave and replace with someone at a, at a lower scale, there'll be a savings. If we have positions that resign, like we did with the part-time custodian, and then we don't fill it, there's a savings there. If we have, you know, someone who was out on leave and is back early and the long-term stuff goes away, there's freedom by there. So, I mean, there are ways for the number that's allotted for payroll to go down. I've estimated as the whole. Just to make sure I have the payroll to cover everyone.
And so, and so that makes sense, but at, at some point, we must get to a, a point where we can't write a check anymore. Because there's no, there's no money in the account. Like, if ours is the magic of municipal finance.
It's a ma, it's a magic. In theory, yes, but that, there's probably sixteen million available if we keep spending, but then there won't be enough at the end of the year for payroll.
Right.
Does that make sense?
Partly so.
I mean, it's all on paper, like you'll look at, you'll see on the, the reports, you'll see we have the budgeted amount, the expended amount.
Yeah.
The encumbered amount, so it's encumbered.
Yeah.
That doesn't stop this negative number from changing.
Right, no, and, and I guess what I'm, what I'm just worried about is, is, is there a point at which we're like, you know what? We can't pay the power bill or we have to shut the doors.
No. No, it could, when we get to that point, which Mr. Shannon has already had multiple conversations with the town. They know what this number is right now and they know this number's going to go up. And they're aware of it. They haven't raised any red flags to us. So, you know, they could cover it hopefully in other ways, like free cash or.
But with that.
Magic of municipal finance.
So without, with, without a backstop for the town, there is a point where we, we can no longer operate. Okay, so, but the town is aware of it, so people are on notice and it's in no one's interest to have a situation where schools don't operate, so.
I've been meeting monthly with the senior of the town manager and co-chair of the select board. And we update them monthly on where we are.
Okay. Uh, and I know you guys are all, all over this and paying attention, paying attention to the subcommittee, but just wanted to ask the, those questions. That's it, I'm going to, I'm going to let the budget section go. Thank you.
More crushing news.
So with that, we'll move off the monthly update and Ms. Owen, I'll turn it back to you for the budget calendar. And this is an item that requires a committee vote.
Yes. So we've seen, we've seen the budget calendar, which is a whole screen. It's pretty standard from year to year, within this year. Physician and I have pushed out many updates because of a budget situation. And we really want to find out what open architect has to say. We really want to find more con, you know, more concrete information or numbers from the town of what, what they're going to allot the schools before we start building the budget and our negotiations with five different budget. So the dates on the calendar are a little further out because we just need more time to work through all those issues, situations. Probably going to be one of them. Kind of hard to plan, but we don't really, you know, we, we just started negotiations, so we don't know what, what the ask's going to be, what we're going to, you know, agree upon, and what's going to be available to us from the town. Not pushed out too far. I mean, obviously, everything still will happen in sequence and, you know, town meeting isn't until May, so technically, but we have wait through till May to kind of finalize what's happening.
Again, this is for approval from the committee. So with that context, any questions, comments in the committee, Ms. Hannah?
No comments on my end.
Ms. Lesky? Mr. Carr?
Let me be, you know, February, April dates correspond with school vacations.
From my end, I, I'll note that, that, that on the proposed budget, December nineteenth is submission of capital request to town manager. When do we approve? I, it's not on our list, at least I've seen the draft capital, we're talking about it as a budget item here. It's not indicated as for a vote, but do we need to vote on that before it's submitted cap?
No. We've, Dr. Shannon, Dr. Shannon and I, I guess, you know, I have been meeting with a subcommittee on leagues and some capital committee and we're working very collaboratively, it's working really well to try to alleviate the multiple meetings and questions. So really, you know, they'll, they've seen drafts, what we're looking for, and this will truly be, when we, you know, I'll submit this draft to them tomorrow to say this is where we are at this point. And with the spreadsheet attached to it is all the backup information and the quotes. So they, they have a bucket of information that they can look at until we work through finalizing what capital is truly going to be. You know, we're prioritizing right now. But we're still, it's still in the works. So they'll just basically, and they know it, it's just a draft that's coming.
Okay. Great, so I have no questions. So with that, I will entertain a motion from the school committee to approve the Cohasse Public School Budget Calendar for fiscal year twenty-six as presented and reflected in agenda item as E two. Motion made by Ms. Hannah. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Lesky, all in favor? I oppose. Motion carries four zero of all members, all members of the committee present at the committee. So thank you very much, Ms. Owen, please move forward and implement on the schedule approved.
Thank you.
With that, we will move on to our fiscal year twenty-six budget priorities. And Ms. Owen, I'll turn it back over to you for this discussion of these items.
Jump in a little bit, if that's okay.
I am going to let.
It is okay by me.
Yeah, great. So with no new strategic plan, we kept our four pillars the same as what they have been in the past because they also align with our current district goals. So our budget priorities really fall into four buckets. And we are using these priorities and will continue to change this with your approval to make decisions about what the FY twenty-six budget will look like. So for teaching and learning, we really are continuing a lot of the work that has been happening and that we anticipate will continue to be a priority for us moving forward to working towards a comprehensive MTSS model that focuses on that tier one instruction, that tier one instruction is for all of our students happening in the regular education classroom. Continuing our curriculum review processes that began this year for ELA and social studies. So anticipating that in the coming year, we may need some additional resources, textbooks, new trade books, things like that. So the purchase of curriculum materials, resources and trade books. We're also continuing to look at things like materials and professional development that will help us build the capacity of our staff to design differentiated project-based and deeper learning experiences for our students. And there's a bit of overlap between our first pillar and our second pillar because truly, like our second pillar is around social emotional wellness and that sense of belonging for students. And in order to achieve high levels of academic excellence, our students need to feel like they belong, they need to feel comfortable, they need to have a sense of academic competence. And so they're really tied together, even though they're, they're listed as two separate priorities. So that second priority is around social emotional learning and that authentic sense of belonging. You know, we really are looking at that tier one level again of MTSS and how we are providing culturally responsive experiences for our students, both in terms of how we build relationships, how we design our curricular experiences, how we are going back to our anxious generation, how we're focusing on the integration of play and responsible risk-taking within the curriculum and our student's school day, how we are supporting our students and being able to take academic risks and engage in discussion and dialogue in the classroom that is at a high level of academic rigor. And so some of that again is prioritizing both resources and professional development for our staff. With our compass point three, we're looking at resources. A lot of these are priorities that we are addressing through capital budget as well. And through our school stabilization fund, where we are looking at how we're funding our Oscar roof, how we're continuing to be proactive in supporting and maintaining our facilities rather than reactive. We also are looking at furniture. We know that our buildings can only be changed so much, but the furniture really impacts the student learning experience. And so how can we start to consider upgrading our furniture at the different schools to better meet the types of learning that we're engaging in, in the classroom? And then finally, communication and engagement is our fourth pillar. And how are we incorporating programming to engage families in the community to build that authentic sense of belonging, not just for our students, but for our families as well? And really prioritizing community and family collaboration. This is also an area where we're trying to support student voice and student agency. I think we're already starting to see that prioritization in inviting families and students to be a part of a lot of the tasks for, task forces and committee work that we're doing. You know, we have all of our stakeholders engaged in the cell phone, task force at the high school, the student services task force. We've had all stakeholders involved in our usability study visioning and will also in our strategic planning. And I think it's really important that we continue to build opportunities that bring everybody together because we are one school. So these are our current priorities, looking for your feedback and thinking about how these drive the decisions as we go into trying to create a more fiscally responsible budget for FY twenty-six.
Thank you very much. Hannah, do you want to start? Because you just had the misfortune of being on the back left and I get a good, kind of clockwise.
Oh, good, no, I, I don't have any questions. I understand why you're keeping them too long, makes sense.
Thank you. Ms. Lesky?
I don't have any questions, I'll just comment that I really appreciate.
Some, some of the language in here, I think, is very specific to. What I'm imagining is a vision for the district going forward while still. Using language that is very familiar to the community in terms of understanding sort of buckets of which we're really focusing on, but the way in which that focus is changing. And I think just for me, like seeing words like academic rigor and accessibility, I think those are really important pieces of the programming to, to look, to look at and to look forward. So I, I appreciate the direction that this is going. And then, and, and to sort of in the, some of the investments that are, we're talking about are really sort of long-term investments when we're talking about professional development. That, that, once we have people, faculty in the buildings that understand new modalities of teaching and learning. Those stay, that, that information stays and gets passed forward and passed on through, through the peer, working peers. And so I think that that sort of investment too, isn't just like, oh, I went to a conference. It's, I went to a conference and I shared what I learned there with 10 other people at my grade level or seven other people in my department. And really sort of helps to create the culture of teaching and learning that you're looking to create, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leskey, Mr. Carter?
No questions.
So thank you, Ms. Hannah. On the budget priorities, I think this is, this is great, I agree with all of them. And I find myself in a little bit of a conundrum because I agree with all of them. And I know as going into the situation we are in, this is going to be a season of trade-offs. And I guess one thing that might be helpful as we go through that is to. And through our committee process, solicit committee feedback on where the committee thinks some of these trade-offs might need to be made. From my own perspective, I think we've made some incredible strides on academic excellence and supporting our, our student services students. Those are things that I think are absolutely critical and should be never touched and compromised to the extent we can. There are other things that we might have to, I think these budget priorities are a great guidepost. But I do think that it, what, what they lack is the, and I think you can't do this at this point, but what they lack is the prioritization of them versus each other. And so, and eventually, I think with where our budget is trending, we'll have to make some of those tough decisions. And so I just asked that we, you know, involve the committee as, as you see fit into helping make those decisions, so.
Yeah, I actually think. What. I'm anticipating is that as we talk about FY26 and what. Some of those trade-offs may be, that we'll be linking each of those to a or a couple of budget priorities so that people can see. Really what it is that that trade-off entails. Because I think having that clarity will help you make some decisions.
And I, and I very much appreciate this framework for having those discussions.
Yeah.
I don't appreciate having to have those discussions, but who would? But this is, this is a great framework, so thank you for putting this together and I, I have no, no specific comments on it, other, but, other than that, you're not. So, and that's not for approval, so we'll just move forward, thank you. So next agenda item of budget resource governance block is our draft capital report. This has included any materials as Agenda Item E4. And I, I imagine Ms. Owen, you'll access share it on the screen.
So this is actually the draft of the capital list that we put together. We've met with all the contingencies that. That are involved, we've heard from, what all the needs are. We have not prioritized anything quite yet, just started talking about that today. So you can see here. We obviously need to continue our bus lease. We need to continue our electric bus lease. And then because the Bluebird is retired, we had now down one bus, so it's an additional ask or an ask for an additional bus. Because we do not, we do not have the word to help in transportation. Window shades. So there's lots of windows that have damaged or torn shade or shades that don't work, but someone just don't have any shades, so. This is a big ask, it's quite a few windows that need it, so we don't have a quote yet, they're actually doing, still trying to get measurements so they can contact a vendor to find out what that's gonna cost. It may or may not hit the list this year, depending on how busy we are in facilities, because it's a big ask, it's, I think I have a list here. Of how many rooms we're actually looking at, 154 windows, so it's quite a few.
And this is also a secure view measure?
Yes.
And are we able to use the window shades for sort of heating and cooling efficiencies as well, that are they that type of shade?
Somewhat not, I mean, they're not. So they're kind of like what they're, what you're talking about.
They're not like thermal. They're not gonna help us with our overall utility, keeping the building cool in the summer, slightly, better room. Okay.
Better than it is now.
Better than nothing.
And then to continue on with our technology plan, we placed all the projectors in interactive. Equipment, you know, in the high school, plan was to do one elementary this year, one next year, but the thought was that we would do half and half. So you'll see it's for Osford and D N, this 13 age school. Security equipment. 52 cameras slash security equipment combination district-wide for areas that we do not have. Visual or cameras or safety measures in those areas, a deer hill, I believe.
So we don't need to go to details?
No.
Or, if, if the committee wants to discuss, we can go to the next session.
Than what they have, so I was gonna say. And then furniture, so we replaced all the furniture at Deer Hill other than the main office, so you can see. First, it's gonna be an ongoing request each year, I want it to be like revolving, every year we're gonna replace some type of furniture in, in, in some sequence. So this year was Deer Hill's main office, because then D N will be complete. The middle school counseling offices, well, we did a last walk-through, the counseling offices are pretty. Fair looking, broken, chipped. Things that they actually constantly picked up themselves on Marketplace, so it'd be nice to make that look a little more professional and clean that up. And then also the high school debate conference room, again, those are like huge old tables and chairs, so that's the combination for this year. I patented the Osford, so each class will have their own set. They currently share. Two new athletic vans. For athletics to help transport. We're in desperate need, we put this on the list every year. Talking to the athletic director even today, he took seven students to Gillette Stadium for an event. We didn't have any way to transport, we couldn't combine with other districts because they were using their own vans. So it cost us about $1,000 to transport those seven kids to Gillette Stadium, which is outrageous, because if we had a bus or a van, it would cost us nothing but a ride. So that, that is an important item there, because he, you know, has shared some information, which I won't get into too much of it. But I can find it. So he said for the fall season, he had 98 scheduled athletics trips, 33 of them had to be filled by outside vendors. That's a lot. You know, to, to share and asking and situate to help, it's not very costly, but when we get outside vendors, it is costly. On 10 occasions during the fall, he did, athletic director couldn't book a game because we didn't have transportation, mostly, this was mostly added JV games or varsity scrimmages. Nine occasions, we had to ask the athletes to transport themselves. And then again, they said it was this two athletes went to the MIAA sportsmanship at Gillette. Seven kids and it, it cost us a fortune to do that, because we had no way to transport them. So that is. Gaining strength in our list of capital, because it's starting to hinder what our athletes can do. And then the last piece is a soft starter, I'm not exactly sure what that is, but we have. The middle school, high school elevator, all the other middle school is, need some repair. And Nick, Ariel, Jake are getting us some quotes. And then trying to figure out what's the best, what's the best route to do to fix that elevator, maybe something other than a soft starter. And then the last four items, they've been on our list for at least the last five years, and it's all the paving and asphalt. Between Deer Hill and, and Osford, the asphalt road from Bond Street needs to be surface, you know, we placed sidewalk and curving here at this building. And extend the sidewalk here at this building, so. Those, you'll see them on our list probably every year until that's been away then. But as a whole, right now, the, the, the top few, we're at, you know, an ask of about 673,000. Which isn't too bad, I've seen the numbers much higher. But we're still working through that. And prioritizing, we still have to meet with the two names on the end from capital.
And that number will go up once we get the numbers from Jacob.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Owen. Any questions or comments, Ms. Hannah? Ms. Leskey?
I don't, I don't think so, I just had a little note to myself about. Collaborating with South Shore Botec on any of the furniture, like whether or not, because I think it did beautiful job down by the, the lobster pound, doing some fencing. And just whether or not like a conference table is something that could be built in a woodshop and then brought for use here. You know, I think chairs are complicated, sofas are complicated, but I had, I was at a meeting in that, in that room, you mentioned the debate conference room, and I was like, what is this?
I'm glad you raised this.
Yeah, no, I mean, so for anyone in the general public who hasn't been in that room, it really is in, in desperate need of. Up-to-date furniture and just over, overall just sort of needs a facelift. Especially if we're holding meetings there. But I, I, that was my only thought was that whether or not there was a partnership with a, you know, some of the board workers. There to do something like a co- like conference table, something, you know, coffee tables, things like that, that can be sort of, that aren't as complicated pieces of furniture, that can just kind of help. One, build that community collaboration, give some meaning to the work that the students are doing as they practice their skills, but also to sort of help our budget.
But I mean, we could finish that, I'll show up to see if they could accommodate something like that, I'm not sure, I mean, I know they do tables, so I see them in the hallway all the time. I think maybe a coffee table or something like that, a side table, we'd have to really ask about a full-size conference table. Yes.
Mr. Carter?
No questions.
Ms. Owen, I'll, I'll be brief, a couple, couple of questions. On the stabilization fund. These, these are items, these are, items are important. But the main purpose of the stabilization fund was to ensure that we have the resources for all of the giant expenses we know that are coming. We see the Osford roof, I know windows replacement, boiler replacement, I can't remember all the list of things that were originally decided, but it's, we have eight-digit millions of dollars of needs for C. In the next 10 years, and so that's what this is really trying to do. Before we, I would ask that before we. Submit these for a formal approval from the committee, if we could get, it looks like this is in bold here, that there's a multi-year plan. But I would like to see a multi-year plan of how we want to spend that stabilization fund over time that includes some of these giant initiatives. Because that, I think that's critically important.
So those four, those items that blue aren't meant to come out of the school stabilization.
Oh, I thought that they were blue because they were stable.
They're blue because they're, they're a bit of a different ass. And we've had some conversation with capital about like. Where those types of asks should actually come from.
Oh, okay.
You know, our liaisons have questioned if they should come from the. The side, the roads and sidewalk stabilization fund, if they should be funded outside of those stabilization funds. If it should just come from capital in general, so. They're not meant to come out of our school stabilization fund, our school stabilization fund really is being reserved for the Osford roof and then hopefully the Deer Hill roof. And then at some point for some of these other things.
That's great to know, and I, then I'll change the tone a little bit. These are things that are eligible for our stabilization fund. So the plan to make sure that those get addressed, you know, can they count for that? So I still want to see, I still think we do this multi-year plan for that stabilization fund is, is important, I'd love to be able to, you know, strategically allocate resources. So that's awesome, on the. Bus lease, the new bus lease, I do recall from prior conversations in prior years with capital that there is a. Allergy to increasing transportation expenses without sufficient justification. So be prepared for headwinds there, you may already, you probably already are just talking with capital there, so, but I just wanted to.
Yeah.
And I, I personally am 100% convinced that we need the transportation resource, our buses are already at capacity, we've done that, but we. We should be prepared to demonstrate that. On the athletic van, another one that I support, I think that we had some potential to get that in the prior year's cycle. But where we did not, where we, I don't think we were able to show that the. You gave the example of $1,000 you spent with Gillette, that the expenditures we incur in the course of a year while unwanted. Were greater than the cost of lease, so we want to make, if, it sounds like you're already keeping track of these things, keeping track of missed opportunities, keeping track of what we're spending money on.
Yes.
If we can project or show that that number, whatever it is, or whatever we spent now to do the things we need to do, is less than the 33.6, which was the, is the cost, then I think this is a no-brainer. So I just wanted to reiterate that as a, as a point.
And we are, we are working on that, putting that together. What, we're hoping, you know, to, to make it a complete package with more detail than they want to know, so we don't have to come back to the table, we don't have to ask questions. So like if you see, we're working on it, like at the bottom, you see all the tabs on, we're starting to put all the backup right there, so when we send this off to capital, it's all there, they can click and read.
So I was. We're also creating. Cover sheets for each ass. That details all the rationale, those numbers that you're talking about, and in some cases, photos.
So thank you, this is this, you know, I have to say you guys are way ahead of our, of where I think we were in prior years, so. I have no comments on the list. So this is not for any approval for the, for the committee, so unless there's any objection or any further comments from the committee, I'll close this one off and we'll move on to our next up item. Hearing none. Do we have any reports from school committees, subcommittees and liaisons?
Deer Hill long got pushed to February due to a parent not being able to attend between now and then, and then. We haven't had. I don't even know how to even like out, like, I don't know.
The subcommittee?
Yeah.
You just have one.
But I don't know who should be a part of it.
Who's on the committee?
Except for Jen and I.
So it's just you and then you can coordinate with Jen and then invite whoever you want, Mr. Carter or whoever.
Okay, and usually it's myself, Sarah and Vinny, I don't, who turns director. And you know, sometimes we have a meeting in a, in an office, sometimes we have a working lunch meeting. A working lunch meeting. And we pick a school and we go, we have a tasting, we have a tasting. Might as well try the food.
Delightful. I mean, that sounds like it.
Yeah.
We should have a lunchtime school committee meeting.
We should.
Right, I have no subcommittee liaison reports, the middle school, school council boards on liaison was yesterday, but was rescheduled, so I did not, I did not listen to this stuff. It's fortunate because I would have had to visit. But anyway, so we'll close that off. There are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair and there are no topics not reasonably anticipated. Um, there are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair and there are no topics not reasonably anticipated by the vice chair, serving as chair. So we'll close that one off. Uh, it looks like, do we have a minutes to approve?
None today.
Um, so we'll close that one off. Uh, for our discussion today, are there any future agenda items if you would like to put it in for the good of the order? Hearing none. Um, we will, we'll obviously have future agenda items because we will, we'll continue to meet. So don't take that as a sign that the school committee's work is done. Uh, I have no reason to request an executive session. So unless others do, we'll close executive session off and I will request a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Someone's.
Motion made by Ms. Jakarta. Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Hannah. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed. Motion carries four, nothing of all members present. Uh, the regular meeting of the Coasco School Committee for Wednesday, December eighteenth is hereby concluded. Thank you very much, everyone.
Is our next meeting January eighth?
That sounds right.